Here we go, but one. Right, anybody else? Everybody here has checked in who this is Carter, right? Okay. I'd like to call the naming to order. Thank you all from the back. We're on Article 31, is there a motion? This is Martin.
Hello. You will notice on page eighteen of thirty-seven that there is an article for the citizen petition for the fair share amendment. And this is an amendment that individuals have spent four years drafting to get as a ballot initiative. And what this is basically asking is for a tax on people making personal income of over a million dollars to pay four percent of that in taxes to cover roads and schools. As many of you know, we've been, and certainly I know it, and my husband knows it, and Greg Louie knows it. We've been looking at school budgets since I moved here and the constantly escalating costs. That particularly hits this district because it's a rural area, but it's also hurting schools across the state. If we still have the rural schools initiative, many of the programs that came, for example, there was a student act, I'm losing the name of it, but it was supposed to finance schools that were struggling. We got nothing, nothing. So in two years, we won't have ESER, we won't have some of the things. We're asking towns, and the school committee will also be signing on to this, to get it as a ballot initiative on the November ballot. And you can read about it online. There are, there are, there's a lot of material there. I'm sorry, I don't have it memorized for you. But if you're a farmer, or a business person, or you have questions, they have a website for Massachusetts Fair Share Act. And please visit it because it explains their rationale. Does anybody have any questions? So I believe...
Are other communities entertaining the fair share?
Yes, they are, all over the state.
Is the motion made yet?
No.
She's about to.
I'm about to. No, this is, this is to get it on the ballot, and then you wrote for it, so...
You got me up over here.
Yes.
You have to... Go ahead Buzz, I'm sorry.
I should have moved it first, but she was talking about it. I didn't know this was gonna happen. It's okay, it's informative, this is about that question.
It's, it's an additional tax on people earning over a million dollars a year. It would be sent on to the legislature with all these signatures. And we hope that it will be called. I believe it does, but, but a widespread citizens ballot by communities all over Massachusetts. And, and given that the tax breaks usually go to the tip of your top, and the, you know, the less talented people pay much more percentage of their income. And the fact that they, you know, those, those individuals also use roads. They use workers that need educating. So why shouldn't they help pay for that? So I believe that the vote to put this on the ballot or, or to endorse putting this on the ballot for the next election statewide.
You move for a resolution in support of it?
A resolution in support, thank you Buzz.
Is there a second to the motion that we pass a resolution in support of the Massachusetts Fair Share Amendment? It will be on the ballot in November.
Second.
Second, lots of seconds, did you get any names? Ron Fuller is a second, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Martin? About the fair share amendment, about what you're being asked to do right now, Mr. Collier? This four percent, David Collier. David Collier, is this four percent on total income for those of higher than over a million? Or is it on the excess of a million?
Um, I think it's the excess.
Any other questions?
Somebody back there?
Somebody's pointing to somebody there, Mr. Porcian.
Well, Tom Boyd's not figuring out. So this curious association, whereas Asheville has structurally deficient bridges, overdue road repair. So the fourth one down.
Does it say? Yeah, it does. I did not put that in there, but... We changed our town names when we wrote this, because other people are putting town names in.
Well, I just don't want you to get hung up on some technical, technicality, but Asheville does not have any bridges out here right now. It's sort of structurally deficient.
Okay, thank you, I should have checked in the town.
Now, so matter close.
Do we want to?
Are you making a motion to amend, Mr. Porcian?
I was just trying to get clarification on that point of thought.
But now that you've got clarification, do you wish to amend anything in the proposed resolution?
Oh, I would, I would, yeah, I would make a motion that we just delete the word "structurally deficient bridges."
Okay, so second.
Second.
Any questions about the proposed amendment? Any discussion or comments about the proposed amendment?
A question, clarification?
Yes, sir.
Is it just to strike that sentence? That one's not striking completely?
Just the Asheville has structurally...
That one, right?
No, just the bridges.
Okay, so we could say Asheville has overdue road repair, would that be acceptable?
Yes, it would be acceptable. I think you could also, you could mention Asheville has overdue road, bridge repair and road repair. But like I said, in order for a bridge to be considered structurally deficient, that has to be designated by Mass DOT.
Okay, so we won't use that term.
So, the motion which has been made and seconded is in the one, two, three, fourth whereas clause, to remove, to delete the words "structurally deficient bridges" and, those four words, is that correct, Mr. Porcian?
Yes.
Is that correct, whoever seconded, Mr. Collier?
Sure.
Sure. I mean, Asheville has overdue road repair and replacement project. Send me Collier and and. Clarity on what the proposed amendment is? Are we ready to vote on the amendment? All those in favor of amending Article 31 by deleting the words "structurally deficient bridges" and, from the fourth whereas clause, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Mr. Porcian, your amendment passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, further discussion on the main resolution, proposed resolution? Anybody? Are we ready to vote? Ready to pass, or not, new resolution regarding Massachusetts Fair Share Amendment, which will be on the November ballot? Yeah? All those in favor of the proposed resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Was that, is there an abstention?
No.
No, okay. The passage to me, I understand, thank you. Article, thank you, Mr. Carter. Great, Article thirty-two, another referendum, a pollinator resolution. Who is speaking to that? Who's speaking to that?
I signed it, so I can, if no one else is here reading it.
Okay, she's supposed to be here to sign. Okay, Mrs. Hop, Mrs. Hop. Shake the paper, yeah?
You bet, you bet. Nancy Hopps, First Coroner, take a motion that we pass this resolution endorsing the protection of pollinators and the enhancement of pollinator habitat here in Asheville.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Why should people be in cave bridges?
Well, I think it's all part of the big climate change phenomena, and the less insecticides we have out there, the better for our land, the better for our food, the better for us and our children, and all those different asthmatic type things going on in people's lives. So I think it's time that we make a stand on that.
Thank you. Comments, questions, observations? Are we ready to vote? Yeah?
Okay.
All those in favor of Article thirty-two as moved by me, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No, okay, so the passage by a majority. And now we're onto Article thirty-three. Now, um, you may have gotten my handout. It shows the motion, I don't have the actual one, it's about anybody. Here's my copy. Okay, that's the main motion. But now here. Mr. Rice?
Mr. Obray.
Mr. Rice?
I move the town vote to amend the Asheville zoning bylaws, Section Roman numeral six, subsection I, large-scale ground-mounted total estate, parentheses PV, facility, by deleting the entirety of subsection I and replacing it with the text that is written in Article thirty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, Mr. Chairman Rice, could you introduce the other planning board members? Thank you to the finance committee for giving up the table to the planning board right here to answer any questions, make any comments. They might make, introduce your board, please.
Thank you, I'm Alan Rice, Chair of the Planning Board, Chairman, to my left, James Sheeney. We've talked through that.
Thank you.
There wasn't, there's a handout out there, if you've all got it. I'll go over it, albeit a little bit more perfectly and briefly in respect to everyone's time here.
Here, Mike.
You want a mic? Hello? Thank you. So, the large-scale ground-mounted total estate facility bylaw that's on the books now was adopted in two thousand and eleven as a requirement of Green Communities grant. And also to encourage solar installations as a bylaw contribution to reducing greenhouse gas emissions, very important. So this, this bylaw has been in the books for, over, slightly over a decade now. And since that time, we've seen smaller installations pop up around town. And at the same time, we know that there's state programs and incentives that promote solar power, along with easing of development, lower cost of land in Western Mass. Leads to areas such as our town and other towns in this region as appealing for multi-megawatt, large-scale solar power facilities. We know this, we've seen at least two of these in abiding towns, certainly some in the region. And there have been problems, either with significantly altered view sheds or some impacts on the environment that were detrimental, and issues with construction. So in view of all this, the planning board has determined that it was time to revisit this existing bylaw. And then it merited some substantial revisions, providing more criteria for larger-scale solar installations, removing some of the more onerous, what we thought were more onerous requirements for smaller scale, all in an effort to find some kind of balance in promoting solar power, which is a good thing, but trying to preserve and maintain the rural-town character and the impacts to abiding neighboring properties, which is trying in the zoning bylaws. So in effect, what we're doing is we're trying to be a little bit proactive here. It's healthy to come back and revisit bylaws that have been on the books for a while. We're trying to find that balance. So in effect, we're trying to plan here. So as the bylaw currently stands, there's basically three categories. Anything that's less, and by the way, this is for ground-mounted facilities. This does, does not apply to roof-mounted solar panels. This is for ground-mounted facilities. The current laws, it's written, has three basic categories. Anything less than fifty kilowatts power output are not subject to the current solar bylaw. It does require a building permit and has to comply with other provisions of the Asheville zoning bylaws. Anything between fifty kilowatts and seven hundred kilowatts, and then occupy less than an acre and a half of land, are allowed by right, but also require a standard building permit and must also meet the provisions of the zoning bylaws. And then anything that's greater than seven hundred kilowatts and occupying more than an acre and a half, that requires a special permitting process. So the board looked at this and determined that really these, these categories seem to be a bit too broad, and we need to revise that. There's really no requirements or guidelines for small scale in terms of siting and screening. It seemed, as I mentioned, some of the requirements for the lower end of the fifty to seven hundred levels seem kind of onerous and unnecessary. And there wasn't enough guidance and criteria for much larger facilities where a special permit's required. So how did we address this? What we did is we revised the bylaw and created three scales of ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facilities. We revised the small scale, what we call small scale, which is up to twenty-five kilowatts, which we see as a reasonable maximum for residential use. Medium scale, we revised to between twenty-five kilowatts and two hundred and fifty kilowatts and less than an acre and a half, we saw is reasonable for local commercial and agricultural uses. And large scale, which now is two hundred and fifty kilowatts and above, and one and a half acres or more, reasonable for larger commercial and utility uses. Small and medium scale facilities would still require a building permit and meeting applicable provisions of the zoning bylaws. Larger scale, a large ones, would have more detailed requirements because they're bigger facilities and they potentially have a much larger effect on neighboring properties and an effect on view sheds, for example, which could potentially impact the very rural character and nature of the town. So it details out, the handout details out a little bit more of small-scale facilities. We looked at setbacks, we looked at the width of solar arrays. On medium-scale facilities, these are the ones between twenty-five kilowatts and more than two hundred and fifty kilowatts, application still goes out to the building department. We removed certain requirements such as deconditioning, cost estimation, annual inspections. But we've added some requirements around design and location, screening requirements, to minimize any potential adverse impacts on neighboring properties. And then we addressed a little bit of noise factor, which we found has been a problem with some of these facilities. The large scale, we've added some significant requirements based on what we've seen happening with other facilities. One would be a visual impact analysis, the second being a stormwater management plan. We've increased the front lot setback from a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet. We've limited the slopes on which solar arrays can be located to ten percent grade. And we've addressed some specifics concerning during the operation and also construction around noise. And we've also decreased the minimum distance from the Asheville Plain Register District from three-quarters of a mile down to a quarter of a mile. We felt that the three-quarters of a mile was a little bit too long for us. And then we've also redefined the capacity, the rated capacity for these facilities. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Like I said, we're trying to do what we can to stay up to speed with current trends, technologies, trying to do, create something that promotes solar power, which is good, and at the same time, trying to protect our resources. That's it.
It is, okay. So I'm going to invite, I'm going to do a question. First, I'm going to tell you, much to my pleasure, Chairman Rice notified me beforehand of an amendment he wants to make to remedy some of the things that he thought should be remedied in the language of the amendment, which is before you. And Mr. Brian Clark has all five, I think.
Six?
Six, they're all in writing, back table, I hope you've got them. So we will entertain them in due course. I think at best... The question, let's write sequence. To entertain those amendments first, so that what you're asking about, talking about, commenting on is what is intended for you to be before you. But I think it makes more sense, invite comments now. And then, Mr. Rice, when you think it's appropriate, whichever one of you is gonna do it, on these amendments, offer these amendments during the course of our conversation. This amendment for you, and these six for Mr. Clark. And Mr. Clark, if you'll come up and just join me, so you're near a microphone when the time comes.
Oh, this is your microphone? So here, I'll trade you the microphone.
Questions, comments about the motion that you see in Article thirty-three? Mrs. Hop, here.
So am I reading it right, Nancy Hopps, First Coroner? Am I reading it right that you're eliminating the need for special permits on all of this?
No, anything above two hundred and fifty kilowatts will require a special permit in accordance with bylaws.
Okay.
Anything above two hundred and fifty kilowatts and/or more than one and a half acres.
Thank you. Questions, comments, yes?
Paul Zensky, Tom Coroner. So the relationship between the two hundred and fifty kilowatts and the one point five acres. One point five acres is pretty significant in terms of the impact, both visually and runoff and everything else. And unless the picture in my head are wrong, two hundred and fifty KW shouldn't require really anywhere near one and a half acres. So I could have totally gone on that. But I'm just wondering about where those numbers came from, if you could explain.
Right now, the current projects are running about four to five acres per acre. So two hundred and fifty kilowatts is a typical output for one acre of rays, plus, in addition to the rays, there'd be auxiliary equipment. So two hundred and fifty kilowatts and one and a half acres correspond fairly closely.
I guess then my comment would be, if one of the concerns is impact on neighborhood, acre and a half is pretty significant. Like, maybe that two fifty is a little high for not requiring a special permit, I guess. My comment.
It's seven hundred.
Mr. Taylor? Use my, and then this already. It's seven hundred. Seven hundred is a term of bylaw. This is, this is a...
So this is reducing?
Reduction of five hundred.
Right. My comment is that maybe that's not reducing it quite enough.
Well, the reason even on two fifty is, it's a scale where if you have a large dairy farm or a big apple orchard that has a lot of refrigeration, or you have a small business that needs a lot of manufacturing space, which we don't have one of those yet, a private installation for use on that property is possible to get up towards two fifty. That's why we reduced it not any more than two fifty. Seven hundred is pretty scary. We also have a setback. If Clark wanted to talk about that setback a little bit, we increased the setback on that.
You know, we, we take the protecting the values of the individuals pretty seriously. And for that reason, we have a hundred foot setback on the rear side and front. We're usually prone to a benefit. Above two fifty, the front setback has increased in time. And in all cases, screenings involved, trying to limit visibility on the adjacent property.
Okay, Mr. Clark. I don't mind an informal conversation, and it's not about me retaining power, but to retain order, let's wait till we're recognized and not have a conversation between two people. Mr. Clark?
I don't remember the exact numbers, but that, that particular part of the provision by, by right is part of the requirement for the Green Communities grant. And I'd say I don't, off the top of my head, I don't remember the exact numbers there, but there is a requirement there as a Green Community to have that kind of size of ray by right.
Thank you. Further comment? Question?
I don't know, well, about this First Coroner. I just wonder if you could explain a little bit more about why you decrease the distance from the historic district at Main Street from three-quarters of an acre to one-quarter of an acre? Miles, right, miles. And why did they reduce it?
One of the reasons was that the, the state looks at one way being punitive in terms of your, of your bylaws when it comes to solar. We're under a little bit of a microscope as a town with respect to being, walking the line between conflicting with the state's push to have more solar power and the town's desire to have it finally be in certain places. The quarter mile is actually fairly significant. So in turn, also in terms of the available space that is in the downtown area, we felt that that was adequate, and we hope to stay out of trouble in that respect.
David Thomas, First Coroner. The large-scale since required both two hundred and fifty kilowatts or greater capacity and one point five acres or more. But solar cells are at fairly low efficiency. If they continue to improve efficiency, you'll have smaller and smaller need for two hundred and fifty kilowatts or more. So how are you gonna handle that if somebody can do it on, say, one acre? That would be excluded from this.
It's a maximum of, a minimum, a maximum of one point five, not a minimum.
Up to?
Up to.
This is one point five acres or more.
For two hundred and fifty kilowatts.
Right. There's no more, it's an and. You have to have both.
I have to say, we've been immersed in this for so long that it's, we get a little confused at times here.
I think your language should be and/or, and slash or.
You're talking about large scale, greater than two fifty?
Yes. You tie both the, the kilowatts and the land size together.
Yep.
As requirements. I would suggest you have and slash or.
Page twenty-one. Are you reading the summary or the actual?
I'm reading it.
In Section 6.1.1, I think is what you're referring to.
So in the summary, it says and, in the actual amendment, it says or.
If the summary had said or, 1.5 acres or more.
No, it's the and that goes before the 1.5. At the very bottom, under proposed revisions with respect to large scale number three, 250 kilowatts or greater capacity can, 1.5 acres or more. Right? So that's in the summary, and that caused confusion, I believe.
Well, what's important is what the bylaw revision says and not what the summary says.
Good point.
So the bylaw revision says that it is, for large scale, it applies to facilities 250 kilowatts or 1.5 acres. 6.1.1. So the summary, I'll take responsibility for writing up the summary, probably what's at 4:00 in the morning, and, but what counts is what's on the warrant.
Warrant, what are you, you're called? I think it's a good time to make these disproposed amendments. Right? This will not cut off, I think this just will enhance the discussion around them. It's going to be less confusing after we make these amendments. So let's do this one first.
Okay, Ms. Moderator.
Mr. Rice?
I move that the town amend the proposed text in Article 33 by replacing the words 24 (numeral 24) with the words 21 (numeral 21) in the following section, 4.3.1. And inserting the words "or public way" directly after the words "property line" in the following sections, 4.3.1 and 4.3.2. And inserting the words "to the nearest property line or public way" directly after the words "disturbed area" in the following sections, 5.3.2 and 6.4.1.1. And inserting the word "minimum" directly before the words "setbacks" in the following sections, 5.3.2 and 6.4.1.1. And I hope that helps you to sleep.
So, wake up and answer the following question. Is there anybody who does not see where you're talking about?
You're okay.
We do. I just want to see whether everybody knows where we're looking at.
I don't know.
We don't know where we're looking at. So it's this one. Do you see that? And that? So if everybody knows 4.3.1, it's proposed amendment. Five.
We read those saying the section, it applies to, see if you mark that up in the right place.
Okay, so the question was, let's hear a second. Is there a second to the motion? That is, okay, we have a second. So, first of all, here's what the amendment seeks to do. Turn in Article 33 to 4.3.1. Everybody there? You see the word 24 is written out and is parenthetically in numerals. We want to move that to 21 instead of 24 in 4.3.1. They're trying to clear what we're talking about right now. Okay, now go to both 4.3.1 and 4.3.2. You see the words "public way"? Everybody? I'm sorry, you see the words "property line"? After the word "property line", the motion would have an "and/or public way", "property line" or "public way" rather than just "property line". Everybody clear what we're looking at there? Okay, so who said no? Raise your hand. Okay. All right, so now look at 5.3.2. Insert the words, let's see, after the words "disturbed area", we're going to insert the words, quote, "to the nearest property line or public way", after the existing words "disturbed area". That's in 5.3.2. Everybody see that? Anybody not see that? Okay, now if you can go to 6.4.1.1. It's exactly the same thing. After the word "disturbed area", the words, we would add "to the nearest property line or public way". And then finally, this amendment, Article 33, proposes that, it's 5.3.2 where we just were, go back to 5.3.2. Before the words "setbacks", this would have the word "minimum", "minimum setbacks". It would do so both in 5.3.2 and at 6.4.1.1. Now everybody knows what we're looking at, right? Do you want to go get a copy of this? Okay. All right, now, Mr. Rice, why are you proposing this amendment?
So, as you can tell, this is pretty dry language. It can get convoluted, and it's easy to overlook things. But language in bylaws has to be clear and concise and consistent. So because it's on the floor here today, and we look this as an opportunity to make a few minor amendments, if you look at the first one, we're replacing the words 24 with the words 21 in Section 4.3.1. We were informed after the fact on this that 21 feet is an industry standard for polling rather than 24. 24 is kind of an arbitrary number. So it makes sense to reduce that to 21 just because it's an industry standard of polling. So it makes sense to keep that consistent with what's out there in the industry for development. For the second one, inserting the words "or public way" directly after the words "property line" in 4.3.1 and 4.3.2. That was to make sure that setbacks are in place if, for example, somebody owns a parcel of land that's intersected by a public way. There's not necessarily a property line there, but they own the whole parcel. So we want to make sure that the setbacks work even for that scenario as they do from an existing setback from property line, if that makes sense. I can clarify. Otherwise, we're concerned that somebody could build an industrial facility down to within 20 feet or whatever the easement is on the public way, and that defeats the purpose of the setback. So that's the reason for adding that language, to ensure that it's consistent throughout of the setback. The third one is inserting the words "to the nearest property line or public way", follows that line of thought, it's just keeping it all consistent. And the fourth one, "minimum", is simply just to keep it consistent with what's in the rest of the bylaw, "minimum setbacks", it's other language that's in there. So we just wanted to correct that and add that to that, keep it all consistent.
Okay, good. Further comments or questions on the proposed amendment?
Quick question. You guys, I think you love me for my impicky questions. So I just wanted to ask, in a couple of places where you say, insert a word after the other word, there are several instances of the word, so I just want to double check if your, every instance you're adding the word, and in particular, the last one on setbacks, some of them are setbacks and some of them are set back. So I just want to know which ones you are changing.
So I actually saw it last night, and it's a good question, and it's fine to put the word "minimum" before the word "setbacks", plural, and leave it at that, because it's in the heading.
Good pickup.
And I think so. My first question was, every instance of property line in those two sections, you're adding "or public way" after it, I think there were several instances.
Correct.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Mary, would you?
General.
Comment about the proposed amendment, amending for these four places? We ready to vote? Did I hear somebody? Ready to vote? Mr. Brooks, do you have your hand up before?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, with the comment on a broader article on the proposed amendment.
Thank you very much for making that distinction. Okay, so we're about to vote, it sounds like, on this amendment. It's amendment that Chairman Rice just spoke to. Is there anybody who doesn't know what you're about to vote on? Okay, great. All those in favor of the proposed amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? It passes unanimously. Good, thank you. I think now, Mr. Clark, you're on deck.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Clark?
I move that the town amend the proposed solar bylaw amendment by changing Section 5.3.4 noise, the last sentence of the first paragraph, following the words "inhabited resident", add the words "beyond the property line", and by changing Section 6.3, Application Content, Subsection G, following the words "inhabited residents", insert the words "beyond the property line".
Just a second. Mr. Collier, second. Please tell us why you guys are doing this.
So the first one of these is on page 25, middle of the page, end of the paragraph. This is to clarify some language there, the original wording would potentially end up with you checking the noise at your house through your own array. And it's my opinion, if you're keeping yourself up with your own array, it's your own fault. So this is trying to push that noise checking to the first property off the, the first residence off the property that the array is on, so presumably somebody else's house. Same change in two different places. So the second place is on page 28, near the top of the page.
Thank you. Questions, comments for Mr. Clark about his proposed amendment? Talking about his proposed amendment by adding the words "beyond the property line" to inhabited, next to, following the words inhabited, the words inhabited residence, adding the words "beyond the property line" in order to make sure we're talking about somebody else's property when it comes to legislation.
Roger Martin, Collier, Bailey Room, how's the planning board feel about that amendment?
Mr. Mark, do you may say? Is that a good question? Planning board, how do you feel about that?
The planning board concurs, that's not a, not enough problems, it's actually a good catch.
Other comments? Questions? Other visions? Ready to vote on the proposed amendment? Okay, all those in favor of amending 5.3.4 noise and 6.3, Application Content, Subsection G, in the manner described by Mr. Clark, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Clark, do you have another amendment?
Chairman, or Mr. Moderator?
Whatever, yes.
I move that the town amend the proposed solar bylaw amendment by changing Section 4.3.1, Maximum Height, the words 24 to 21, and following the words "nearest property line", add "and pole mounted", and by changing Section 5.3.1, Maximum Height, following the words 18 feet, add "when rack mounted and shall be 21 feet when pole mounted", and changing Section 6.4.3.5, Heights, following the words 18 feet above finished grade, add "when rack mounted shall be 21 feet above finished grade when pole mounted".
Second. Who's second? Mr. Collier, second. Okay, so, Mr. Clark, as to the first portion, it's amending the same language in 4.3.1 that has already been amended, we have amended, it's already passed, however, you're adding the words "and pole mounted", right?
Yeah, I guess we got our lines crossed a little bit here, I thought I was leaving this amendment for the first section, the 4.3.1, and I think we had reached an agreement that that would be limited to pole mounted as well. So I'm not sure how we straighten out these two amendments that are colliding a little here.
Does the planning board have anything to say about the colliding amendments here?
I don't think so, no.
What about the pole mounted language? Well, some of them are overlapping, right? As to five, I mean, 4.3.1. I assume you're restoring so much of this amendment as we just voted, right? So what you're really doing is asking for, in the first paragraph, first portion of your motion, you want to add to Section 4.3.1 Maximum Height by adding the words "and pole mounted", following the words "nearest property line", correct? So that portion of Mr. Clark's proposed amendment, I think, who seconded? Mr. Collier? Do you agree with removing the language, comma, then the words 24 to 21, and just leaving and following the words "nearest property line", add "and pole mounted"?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Do you agree, Mr. Clark? So that portion of this amendment has just been modified to over asking to add to that subsection is "and pole mounted". Correct? Correct. How's the planning board feel about that portion of that amendment?
Fine with it.
Fine, 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 we got four points. Okay. Now, in 5.3.1, Maximum Height, following the words 18 feet, add this language, quote, "when rack mounted and shall be 21 feet when pole mounted". Everybody see that before we talk about it? Anybody confused about where we are, what we're talking about?
Page 24.
Page 24. I think we're okay. And he's going to speak to that, but he's also going to speak to 6.4.3.5. Take a look at 6.4.3.5.
Page 30, middle of the page.
Following the words, quote, 18 per 18, "above finished grade", add these words, quote, "when rack mounted and shall be 21 feet above finished grade when pole mounted". So that's what we're talking about. And hang on for one second, make sure your second agrees, your second agrees with that, correct? Mr. Collier?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Got Mr. Clark's opinions.
Okay, I think as Alan mentioned earlier, the kind of the standard seems to be for pole mounted arrays, and they're, they're about 21 feet, or a little less than 21 feet. So we elected to change that maximum height to 21 feet, provided it is pole mounted, and leave it at 18 feet for the, for rack mounted in the larger arrays.
What is pole mounted versus rack mounted?
Okay, good question. Rack mounted is when, those are the more common ones you see around, for ground mounted arrays, they're, a row of PV system photovoltaic panels that are mounted to a rack that's on the ground. Typically, they're long, quite long. Particularly in large array, they'll be very long. For pole mounted, the single pole that goes up, it has to be usually relatively square array mounted up on top of the pole. You may have multiple poles, multiple arrays up there, how connected the way you're acting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, are you ready?
Yeah, we're supportive of this amendment. What's happened here is that as we've been going through these solar bylaws for the last two years, and getting feedback from other towns, and looking at what's common in the way of installations, we've found that the dimensions of these two different structures are changing in height requirements. So the distinction between rack mounted and pole mounted is a good one, and we agree with that. There's a visual difference in the impact to neighboring properties between those two installations. If you've seen the rack mounted system down on 112 down in Buckland, that's a sort of wall effect that we see there. And if that was 25 feet from your property line, it could be pretty significant effect. Whereas if you have a pole mounted system and they're spaced, they're never right next to each other immediately, next to each other, you could stagger them. It's not as much of an effect. So we're trying to allow for both types of installations. And the other factor here is that the demand for solar on a private basis is changing also as people acquire electric vehicles and do more in the way of switching from oil to solar. So we're trying to adapt to that too, and that's been going on for a couple of years while we've been drawing this revision on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mark?
My question before, because can this kind of thing be done only at annual town meeting or must it be done, can it be done at a special? Because it feels like there's a lot of changes here that are hard to keep, and I have one specific one that I think is wrong. So must it be done at an annual?
No, indeed not be done at an annual.
So, I mean, I don't have a sense of the body.
This will require a super majority, this is zoning by law, super majority, whatever, it could be done at a special.
Well, I'd like you to consider whether there's enough changes at all, but I would just say on 6.4.3.5, the first part, before 18 feet says shall not be, and the second part says and shall be. So it feels to me like there's a lot of inconsistencies here. I would recommend that the planning board go back and Mr. Clark can redo the thing so we have one clean sheet. But I'm not making an amendment unless, more than table unless you would.
Thank you. Is there any question? Would someone in the planning board like to address whether or not this should be put over to the special town meeting, or should we continue as planned today? Mr. Chair?
In response to your inquiry, and I don't, 6.4.3.5, I see where you say shall not exceed 18, but I don't see shall after that. Can you tell me where you're talking about?
Yeah, just further along, and then it says when rack mounted and shall be 21 feet when pole mounted. So one says shall not be more than 18 feet, and the other says shall be 21. It feels inconsistent.
Okay, I see what you're saying. And the proposed amendment, he's saying one is shall not exceed, and the other says shall be this. That's what you're saying, and it seems like that's inconsistent. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so we can, Mr. Moderator, can I modify the amendment? You may. Yeah, looking to amendment, yeah. I just want to modify. Brian's third part of amendment two says when rack mounted and shall be, we want to change that to when rack mounted shall not exceed 21 feet above finished grade when pole mounted. So that it's consistent with the shall not exceed 18 feet earlier in the paragraph, if Mr. Mark is, is that good? Is that friendly to you, Mr. Clark?
Well, I think that the mover and the second are both agreed that's a friendly amendment and one thing, and to do, they're going to add them forward instead of shall be, shall not exceed.
Does the planning board have any problem with that? Are there other visions you'd like us to do?
Absolutely not.
Oh, okay. Absolutely not. Mr. Clark, or Mr. Coler, or anyone else, anything else to say about the proposed amendment as amended to the amendment?
Well, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I reckon.
We're going to be voting on.
You're a member?
No. I think since the mover and the second are each agreed to change as a friendly amendment, I don't think the meeting has to vote on the words not to exceed. However, the overall amendment, which Mr. Clark has offered, we are going to vote on once we're ready and going to vote. Are we ready to vote on Mr. Clark's overall amendment now that it says not to exceed a pole mounted part? And now that he's removed the implicative words, changing 24 to 21? Everybody clear on what, and who's confused about where we're at? Thank you. So, Mr. Clark has moved to amend, we're talking, it's a big amendment, which is Article 33. And Mr. Clark has moved to amend Section 4.3.1, 5.3.1, and 6.4.3.5. Rather than forcing you to look that up, what we're going to do is, first what he did is he asked, once again, to remove 21 in place of 21, yeah, 24 in place of 21. That's now been reverted by their agreement, because we've already done that, right? So now, we're going to add the word pole mounted to 4.3.1, if you agree to do so. And then with respect to 5.3.1 Maximum Height, there we're going to add the words when rack mounted and shall not exceed 21 feet, because the mover and the second have agreed that has to be planned. Was that where the pole, when pole mounted, thank you. And with respect to when rack mounted, we're adding the words when rack mounted and shall be 21 feet above finished grade, shall not exceed. Is that, do I have that right?
Shall not exceed either.
That should be shall not exceed.
Either shall not exceed.
Do you agree with that?
Vote.
Vote, shall be shall not exceed. Okay. Now, hand raise. Are we good?
Yeah.
Thank you for raising your hand, yes.
So 5.3.1, the wording on that one was be as opposed to, there wouldn't be a need for the not exceed, like, by point, the first time it said, it says shall be 18 feet, maximum height shall be 18 feet, so you wouldn't need to substitute not exceed or be in fact, you just in the other one.
Okay, so read it again from Mr. Clark, with Mr. Osterman's, again saying not to exceed. Right, we got it, right? Okay. So amendment two is such that we're getting rid of the 24 to 21 change that had already happened. The second part of amendment two, we're not making any changes, because it's, the first part of the sentence is about the maximum height. The third part of this amendment two, we're just changing shall be 21 feet to shall not exceed 21 feet. Mr. Osterman, good?
Sounds good.
Thanks. Mr. Clark, you good? The planning board, you good?
Yeah, this is why planning board terms are five years.
It's a year. That's why when I serve, my term is only five years. All right, so starting from the discussion on the proposed amendment, any further confusion about what we're about to vote on? We're going to call those in favor of Mr. Clark's amendment as we now understand it. Say aye, Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That has to be amended, thank you. Okay. Despite causing to be ran out on a rail, but nevertheless, Mr. Clark has another amendment. Please do.
Okay, this next one is relevant to page 29, top of the page, in this first section. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the proposed solar bylaw amendment by changing Section 6.4.1.1.
Subsection.
Subsection E.
Give him the second of the line.
Following the words neighboring town boundaries, add or not less than 300 feet from the property line if the property spans the town boundary.
Is there a second? Second.
Okay, this one's a little more involved. I think this might be the hardest one in terms of understanding. This is a case where a property line, a property spans the town line, which is not unusual in my, in Apple Valley, our large farm there, for example, the Buckland, Ashville town line runs kind of through the middle of the farm, so we have a lot of land on both sides of the town line. The original wording here would say that if we wanted to site an array that spanned that time town line for geographic reasons or whatever, we would not be able to. The intent of this change is to allow us to span the town line with an array. In that case, the rules for citing the array would apply in each of the towns. So the section of the array in Ashville would be under the jurisdictions of the Ashville bylaw, and the section of the array in Buckland would be under the jurisdiction of the Buckland rules. That's an easier case to understand. The next case is, what about citing the array right up to the town line? The original intent of this section of the bylaw was to, as I understand it from the planning board, was to afford neighboring towns and their butters, courtesy of making sure that an array was set back from butters and neighboring towns by at least 300 feet to try to compensate for, to avoid an array getting put up close to the property line but not coming under their jurisdiction. So the language I've added here allows you to both cite an array that spans the town line and cite an array that comes right up to the town line as long as at least 300 feet of setback to a neighboring, a butter on the other side of the town line. So there's still always at least a 300 setback to a butter from the neighboring town. Does that make any sense?
It's quickly.
Not quickly. It's the other one.
It's the other one? What does that mean here?
Molly, that is fair road. I'm not in favor of this, but I just wonder whether we have the authority to apply a restriction in another town, whether it's by good intention or otherwise, do we have that right?
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Babbies. Zoning Board members.
I think the answer is no, we do not have the authority, so whatever the other town rules are to respect the solar development apply, that's a given. I'm actually not in support of this amendment myself, because it gets confusing when the town line might also be a road. And then you have the issue of how close to the roads you can build. I think we have allowed in this bylaw for, we have a tentative limit on a single, large-scale installation, but we allow for with a significant separation, a second installation on the same ownership property. The buffer of 300 feet in between those is actually pretty significant, and I just don't feel like we need this particular amendment.
Thank you. Other comments to reply to that, Mr. Clark?
The concern is that.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
The concern about whether that is going to allow the array to cover up your road can result in simply saying the minimum setbacks still apply. So we can amend the proposed amendment to answer that concern.
Mr. Clark likes that. So, yes, Mr. Chairman.
I believe in that case, we solved that with the amendment, the first amendment that the planning board brought that we moved. If there's a road, and it happens to just be along the town boundary, it's still a public way, so a setback would apply.
I'm not understanding how that resolved this. Could you explain it?
So, the amendment that was passed stipulates that if you have a public way, there has to be a setback of a public way regardless of whether or not there's a property line there, or a town boundary for that matter. If the road runs along the town boundary, it's a public way. As long as it's a public way, that required setback has to be in place. Does that make sense?
I think it does. Mr. Clark, let's say you.
If there's no, if there's no public way that runs along the town boundary, then it's a different issue. It's just a town boundary line and no public way. But if there's a public way, which a public, up in Adams, public ways run along town boundaries. Yeah, the setback would apply.
Or prevent you from doing the other investigation.
Do I still withdraw?
Well, oh, no, I, maybe a misunderstanding, if I had a little staying, the concern with the public way, I'm talking about the town line, it does not involve a public way.
Right. Correct, I thought I heard an amendment to the amendment that talked about, and I think it's not necessary.
Because.
We established that with this previous amendment, correct?
I didn't understand, I didn't understand what was being asked. Still, I don't know what the answer is to Molly's concern about the legality of it. I'm not sure what the implications of that is to my amendment, whether it leaves.
Well, I think what Molly is bringing up is that even if it's your land on the other side of the town line, that portion could be subjected to whatever the bylaws stipulate in that town, and that's out of our jurisdiction, we have no say in that. So if it's the same restriction or.
So if it's the same restriction or, or allowance, then no problem. But that's out of our jurisdiction. We care about what's within the town boundary.
Mr. Babees, is that suggestive, I'm sorry? Could you come up here with my voice?
So, my concern is, um, still remains in terms of the jurisdiction in another town. But the public way issue raises another question for me. Because if it's a public way, it's in a right, it's within a right of way, correct? Is not the line on either side of the right of way a property line regardless if you own property on both sides?
So according to town council, there may be court cases out there that's, support the position that if it's a, a public way, it's considered frontage and therefore a line of some kind. The reason for putting in this earlier amendment is to just make it clear cut. Because I have not found those court cases. So instead of trying to rely on precedent, we're putting the, the language right into the bylaw that stipulates that.
So it may be redundant, but you felt it was necessary in case?
Just in case.
Back to you, Mr. Clark.
If I may have a thought.
Please. So nice to have you back from Molly.
Molly, John Berger. So, a little concern here, Mr. Clark, is if the same property owner is, if your property lines span the town boundary, right? That's the only actual concern to try to deal with here. So what about a different amendment that exempts that situation? In other words, 300 feet from the town line unless the property spanned the town line. Unless the butter is the same owner as the piece in Asheville. Instead of trying to change the language itself, create a special case for the special case.
We're looking at A, we're looking at 6.4.1.1 subsection E. And what are you, can you make your vote?
I have no, it's just a thought, I don't want to have another motion.
Do you articulate what your thought?
Um, is rather than, rather than not less than 300 feet from property line, the property spanned the town boundary, it would be, uh, 300 feet from the town boundary unless, uh, I don't know the right language, but the owner of the lot in Asheville is the same owner as the lot on the other side of the town line. That would allow it to run right up to the town line and then Buckland would do a review what they will through the other half of your array. What I'm trying to get at is, it's actually a very significant concern. I'm sure there are places, if you wanted to put a good sized array in your farm, it'd be limited where you could do it. Right? And to have the town line, if they prevented you, wouldn't be the situation of what the planning board is trying to achieve.
Mr. Clark?
I want to get a clarification. This, this might seem so specific that an applicant could still request a variance in the same way that they do with, all the time with our telecommunication towers and so on. And this seems like a case that would certainly be, you know, I would imagine planning boards would be receptive to. So, my thought is that maybe we should just vote this amendment down and see this as an opportunity for a special case for variance.
Variance goes as opposed to, or the planning board for a special part. Right, that'd be a special part and not a variance. Ms. Babees, you want to talk about the variance issue? For this narrow situation in which a person owns in two different towns? You can say no, if you want, if you don't want to.
I don't have a comment at that point.
Okay, Ms. Quigley? Or maybe Ms. Babees?
I'm, I'm struggling to get to this because the Green Communities, I'm sorry, Green Communities is, has a by right, solar by right clause. And I'm worried about some of this meaning us non-qualified Green Communities anymore. And it's a deep pocket of funding for us right now in that we won't have to have the windows open and the heat on if we get the next grant funded for some conditioning and installation. It says as of right. And it goes up to 250. No, some ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems. I mean, if you have some, except where necessary to protect public health, safety, or welfare. And that, that means they can proceed, we need to proceed, the development may proceed without the need for a special permit, a variance, an amendment, or waiver, or other discretionary approval. And this has several spots in it by medium size under 250. You don't comply with the setback, you have to get a waiver or a special permit, and that's going to throw us out. I'm not sure whether this is the same thing. Is this, are we regulating the size of the, for the health? I have concerns, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer.
Mr. Rice, can you address those concerns?
I'm not sure if I fully understand the concern, but I'll try to answer it. As of right, up to, the way this bylaw is written, up to a certain kilowattage output, above 250, it's allowed by special permit. So that, so I have to, have to go through a special permitting process in order to get that facility approved. And the other key thing is here, and I think you, you read it in your language, is unreasonable versus reasonable. And that's a key piece to this. What we're trying to do is make reasonable provisions in this that allows the, the facility to move forward. But we're trying to protect the health, safety, and welfare. And in this case, if it's a, a property that crosses a town boundary and you have a public way, the whole point of these amendments and the revision is to not have a big industrial structure right up against a public way or 20 feet back with the easement. So I'm not sure if that's a concern for me. Because if it's a smaller scale facility, which is allowed, which is as of right, it's as of right, it doesn't require a special permit from the planning board. It's just a submittal for a building permit and whatever application contents are required for that. And let's not misunderstand you, right?
I think I'm confusing this. I, I spoke to the larger, um, your zoning bylaw change at the same time, it got small and medium. And I should probably wait and speak to that. So it, it may not apply to the, it doesn't apply to large, large scale. The Green Communities Act doesn't apply to large scale. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, what, what we revise is that as of right is for any facility up to a 250 kilowatt output and/or occupying one and a half or more acres. Anything below that is as of right.
It sounds like when you go back to discussion of the main motion, we're going to return to Ms. Quigley, and I'm very concerned right now, Mr. Atlantic.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It, it's clear that this is a serious issue that requires a great deal of law discussion. And it appears that to me that it's not ready for today. I would move that we table this until another date certain. The select board is planning to have it STM on June 13th. And we would propose that we use that time to complete, you know, modification of the current article and have it ready for that date.
And to mention the table, motion to table is non-debatable, it's non-amendable. It requires a two-thirds majority. We don't need a date certain to which to continue. Just for purposes of identification, it was a motion to postpone to a date certain. That's a simple majority that's needed to end, and that is debatable and amendable. But this is a motion to table, so, uh, it is on the floor. All, and it's seconded. What time is it? Yeah. All those in favor of tabling, it is non-debatable, non-amendable. All those in favor of tabling this article, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All those abstaining? There's a few abstentions. I think we have to do it by hand vote, and I'm unwilling to count, to just assume. So. Hold it, I'm sorry. This is a motion for point of information.
Yeah, is this to postpone the whole solar amendment?
Entire Article 3. We seek to amend our zoning bylaws. We are just tabling it. We don't have a date for it. It was proposed by Mr. Atlantic, perhaps the next special time being, but it's not required. Just putting it on the table, laying it on the table. Okay? So, can I have the tellers, please? Nancy Ha, Martine, Trudy Ha, and Tom Trump. So, everybody in favor of tabling, keep your hand up until it's been counted.
Tabling Article 3. Is it Amendment 33 or Article 11? The whole thing is.
The whole article. Right, this, if your hand is up, you're in favor of tabling this, not dealing with it anymore today. Okay, you may put your hands down. Okay, all those who are opposed to tabling Article 33, please raise your hand. Okay? Although, okay, you may put your hands down. All those who are abstaining and not voting in whether to table Article 3. You may put your hands down.
We have 30 yes and 10 no, 2 are said.
Okay, so it's a total of 43, of which 30, right? You said 30? Like 45? 30, yes? Out of 45? That sounds like two-thirds to me. Okay, 45 voters had their hands off one way or the other. And 30 of those 45 voted to table, which means it carries the tabling by a two-thirds supermajority. So, Article 33. I do want to say before we put this away, to our planning board, Mr. Clark, Mr. Clark, everybody else who's worked so hard on this. We hope to see you again in the future and bring this to us again. And, uh, can't thank you enough for the work. It is 3:30, I know some, I don't understand why, but someone wants to see the Kentucky tournament. I'm going to put all my money on who gives it then, but there you go. I live in the best town in the universe. And you're the people that make it the best. For everyone, the 200 or so volunteers who brought us to this moment this year, thank you, thank you, thank you. For the people on the front table here, for the finance committee. Yes, thank you. We have a vote, thank you. Multiple motion to adjourn, I can't wait for you to do it. All in favor, say aye. Any votes? Any objections, go pass them in the air. Thank you.